Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Present. Counselor Allen.
Present.
Present. Counselor Rook.
Present.
Present. Counselor Gomez.
Present.
Present. Counselor Kerry Walsh.
Present.
Present. Counselor Ash. Here, Counselor Twigs. Present. Counselor Shea. Present. Counselor Fenton.
Present.
Present. Counselor Hurst.
Present.
Present. Counselor Bud Williams. Present. Counselor Ramos.
Present. The Counselor and their guests, please rise and join me in a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, which is a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any reports of committee? Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met before this meeting. The Finance Committee met at 6:15 to go over the items, finance-related items on tonight's agenda. We had no issue, in attendance were all three members of the Finance Committee, myself, Counselor Twigs, and Counselor Fenton, and we had no issues with any of the items that are on the agenda, so we were in support of all three items, all five items.
All in favor of accepting the committee reports, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The clerk, please recognize the Counselor's seat. Number 12.
Counselor Bud Williams. Here.
Are there any other reports of committee? Seeing none. Item number one, Mr. Clerk.
Item number one is the August Revenues versus Expenditures Report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight you have the August Revenue Expenditure Report. It reflects the first two months of fiscal year 2018, and things are going as budgeted and similar to past fiscal years.
Any questions or comments from the Council? All in favor of accepting the report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Next item.
Items two through four are petitions, are reports on petitions from the Board of Public Works. The recommendations are approved. The petitions are the discontinuance of Andover Road and the installation of underground gas conduits on Joan Road and Rosemary Drive.
Counselor Fenton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Specifically with reference to item number two concerning Andover Road, I don't, is there anybody here today to speak on that matter? Okay, there are some folks here. I remind the body that at the last meeting that we took this up, I raised some concerns about the unusual nature of discontinuing this type of private way, and the city solicitor indicated that he would like to do some additional due diligence. I don't know if that report is available this evening, and I don't know what the folks who are here are here to speak on, but I have the same concern that I had at the last meeting, which is that discontinuing this public road may constitute a taking under state law for eminent domain purposes, and the fee of the property, who would hold title afterwards, is questionable to me, as well as any neighbors and people in the community that might be impacted by no longer being able to use that dirt road. So unless there's a report or testimony submitted that alleviates that concern, I'm still not prepared to support it.
Counselor, was there, there was a formal request from the Law Department, correct, at the last meeting?
Formal to the extent that I asked verbally for it. We didn't vote on requesting a legal opinion, but it was my understanding that some due diligence would be done. I haven't heard anything on it, and I also haven't followed up on it myself, so the solicitor very well may have been in touch with Hector and DPW, and I'm just not aware. It looks like Attorney Davis may have something to add.
I know that I, myself, as well as Ed Pukulua, have been trying to get into contact with Hector Velez, so I've emailed him, and I'm sure Ed is looking into it as well, so I will make sure that I have a report for the Council prior to the next meeting.
Okay. Mr. President, because we have some residents down here tonight, I know it's not our ordinary procedure, but if it would be amenable to the body to suspending the rules, just to hear what they have to say, I'm not sure if they're here in support or in opposition to the road discontinuance, but with your deference, I'd ask that we allow them to submit some testimony, so we know what they have to say.
Without objection, if there's anyone here to speak on item number two, please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, it's Trisha Twining, 16 Andover Road, Springfield, Mass. And the reason, we weren't informed that you guys had the other meeting back, I believe, in August through Hector, this all started with a light pole. I've been a resident of Springfield for 42 years, this is my second home, and it's been nothing but a nightmare. So that's what I spoke to a lot of people, we did everything that we were supposed to do, we got all the police reports on both Methuen and Goodwin, which are both the side streets, are, that dirt road that we're asking to discontinue is my front yard only. I cannot have privacy, I can't do offense, I pick up trash every day, I deal with drug deals, people doing things in cars, I had supporting police reports. I only lived there since last May, and there's five to six pages of complaints on both of those streets. So my neighbor and I had, did what we were supposed to, we got a petition, we had to get six, I believe, signatures, I got over, I don't know, I stopped at 50. All the neighbors are for it, we had a meeting on the street back in August, where the fire department said that they were in favor for it, the water department, everybody was there. Then I believe you guys had a meeting on August 27th, Hector failed to inform me, I was out of town on business, so I missed that first meeting. Then I followed up with him again, and he said that it was tonight at 7:00, in room 220. So I want to know what's going to happen from here. Do I put my house up for sale? Do we wait another month? What goes on from this moment?
Counselor Fenton.
Thank you, Mr. President, and ma'am, thank you for that testimony. I'm still not clear on where the property line would fall, because traditionally if there's a dirt road and it's a private way, each butter owns to the middle of the street, and based on the GIS, and from what I can see here, the ingress and egress from your house is actually only on Andover Road.
Right, and I'm the only house, my house is facing, and we were going to do a survey, so I've been speaking to a gentleman down at the Department of Public Works, because Hector had asked that me and my neighbor, who decided that if we got the permission to own the property, we would be more than happy to pay the $17,000, $18,000 to have it surveyed, and we were going to divide it, for property tax reasons, down the middle of the street. So Hector asked us to get it surveyed, I was also informed by the guy down at Tapley Street, I have to get his name, because I apologize, I forgot, he said absolutely not, you're not going to waste the money and pay for a survey until you are granted that property. I own this house, plus the property on the side, which is a whole other supposedly buildable lot, and there's no other houses, the only house that is facing Goodwin is his house on the corner, and a duplex on the right. Nothing else is there, it's all my, the front of my house. Had I been able to put up a fence, had I been told that I could do a buildable property, I'm digging into a whole bunch of, like when the property was first built back in the 1940s, and now they're telling me it's probably grandfathered. So there's a lot that I'm learning about this property now.
And ma'am, so it appears that there's three different parcels that have frontage on this portion that you want to discontinue. So one is Mr. Glanville, is that you, sir? And then the other, and I don't see this gentle lady's name on the petition, her name is Maria Cruz, have you been in touch with Ms. Cruz?
She never showed up, she was given a letter that was sent out, she never, yeah.
Okay.
I think she owns the property, and she rents it out, it's a duplex, she doesn't physically live there.
But a portion of her property would also be, she would be acquiring a portion of real estate here as well?
Right, and I was also informed if she declined, we could petition that, because we don't want, and we were going to also give her some space, along with the city happened, you know, so we can build back for the fence. It's the whole traffic thing, you know, I have a teenage daughter, my daughter shouldn't have to run in her house with keys in hand, because there's strangers sitting out there in a car with their lights off.
Sir, if you could come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hal Glanville, I live on 109 Glenwood Street, Springfield, Mass. So on this street, for some reason, it's like a magnet for problems. One year, there was a fire at her house, I had to put it out, some gangs were having a little spat, they started burning, not her house, though, oh, she's over there, the neighbor that used to live there, and she bought the house, so there's a lot of problems, a lot of, I don't know why, it's a parking, it's drugs, it's just a bad spot, two streets to get together, it's terrible. Anyways, so what we're trying to do is, there's a dirt road, so all you guys know, it's a dirt road, she has this side house, she owns both lots, the whole side, whole length of the dirt road. I own one house on this side, there's a lady on this side, we can't get in touch with her, but if we, we're going to try to get the land, and if you guys say yes, we get the land, we cut out a lot of stuff for the city to do, to plow it, for lights, and all that stuff, so you guys don't have to do that, we'll, you know, we'll take over. So we're trying to get, if this person declines on it, I'll buy the land all the way down, and they'll still have their little section, we're going to put a fence here, a fence here, and there's, solves the problem of the neighborhood. And if you looked at the police report, she has tons of police reports of all the criminal actions that have around there. It's a bad spot, really. I think this would stop it, seriously. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, and Mr. President, I, at the last meeting, I indicated, I also live in a very similar circumstance, on a dirt road in my neighborhood, and the butters that I have, both behind me and on the other side of Armory Street, owned to the middle of that street. So I appreciate the passion in coming down here, because of the fact that we have some outstanding issues that the Law Department needs to look at in terms of the eminent domain taking, as well as the fact that Ms. Cruz isn't here, and we're not in a position to know what her perspective is on this, I'd ask that, Mr. President, make a motion that we table this until a future date, and so that you folks know what would happen then, is that it would be brought up again at our next regular meeting, and in the meantime, that would allow the Law Department to draft up a legal opinion as to the impact that the city may see from an eminent domain perspective, and that'll also give us some more time to hear from Ms. Maria Cruz and her standpoint on this.
All right, so there's a motion to table the matter. Counselor, do you want to include, you don't have to, but do you want to include communication from the neighborhood council?
I think that that would be beneficial as well, I think it would be great if, I'm not sure which neighborhood council this is, Mr. President, I know it's your district.
It would fall under Pine Point Council.
Okay, I think that it would be, you, very useful to have their input as well.
Motion to table the matter? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there a second for that motion? Second of it, Counselor Ash, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Items three and four, are there any questions or comments on items three and four? Seeing none, all in favor of accepting the petition, say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number five is a Health New England Open Gyms Program grant in the amount of
Good evening, Counselors, we're very pleased to report to you tonight that Health New England is generously donating this money tonight to Open Kennedy, Forest Park, Milton Bradley, Brookings and Chestnut Schools for the Evening Gym Program. We're going to be starting November 13th and going through April 13th, and we are applying through the Shannon Grant for the Harina Evening Gym Site.
Counselor Hurst.
From, it's about $15,000 more, so that takes the pressure off of the grant sources that we've gotten from the Commonwealth in the past.
So it's an increase in $15,000. What was the impetus for the increase? What was?
They like what we're doing, they went around to the locations last year, like they like seeing the interaction. If you saw, at one of the sites, they brought the Thunderbirds out to the Milton Bradley site, so they like the results that they're seeing at all the different sites.
Now, does this just go towards open gym, or does it go towards after-school programs as well?
After-school is separate, this is just the Evening Gym portion, which is equally as important as the after-school.
And I would agree, and is this, are there more schools that are open this year, or does this?
The school department uses a lot of the other buildings for their, now they have middle school sports programs and so forth, so this is the sites that we have an easier time getting into to do Evening Gym.
Got it. Okay, well, I just want to commend you for all of your hard work. I know a number of us Counselors have been fighting for additional open gym and funding, certainly from the city, but, you know, in the event that the city, you know, can't include it in the line item of their budget, you know, we appreciate the hard work that you're doing in terms of solidifying those funds elsewhere, so thank you.
We appreciate working with all of you as well.
Absolutely.
Counselor Gomez.
Did I mention something about Harina School?
Yes.
So this money doesn't, it doesn't go to Harina yet, right?
No, we're applying through the Shannon Grant, so that's what has been the funding for that site in the past.
But Chestnut is already funded for this.
Chestnut is part of this group.
All right, so my question is, is it feasible for us to open both sites, Harina and Chestnut?
If I get the Shannon Grant, yes.
Okay, if other organizations?
Basketball program as well at Harina.
Okay, no, because the reason why I ask is sometimes people have contacted me in the past with trouble with trying to get some space at Harina, and I was just making sure, like if we put the program in there, can those folks still kind of utilize that program? And if they do, if it's already paid for, do we still charge them if they want to use the gym?
We would work with any group that fell into that category, we use two out of the three, so a lot of times they're renting and they use that third gym.
Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments from the Council? Counselor Allen.
Thanks, Mr. President. Yeah, Pat, did we pay any out of our budget, or is this totally grant funded?
The budget is funding the after-school portion as well, and the Pottinger got renewed for a 21st Century site this year.
Is that, how much is that, $100,000, or?
Excuse me?
How much was that this year?
Hundred.
$100,000.
Yep.
So that hundred in the city budget goes to the after-school, and there's 67 from Health New England goes to the open gym.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So it's a good match.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor of accepting the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Counsel Williams.
Standing right there.
I have objection.
There's an objection.
If it's Pat's, I, boy, I have a good one. I'm sorry.
Item number nine, Parks Department donation in the amount of $74,000.
Yeah, this is a very generous donation through John Delaney's Good Work on the Right to Remember. These were the funds that he raised last year, and we are building the new park at the Lynch School Site, and he also raised another 75, which will be coming probably before the Council and earlier this year. These monies will be used to construct the memorial and the fields at this new park.
Counselor Williams.
Yeah, Mr. President, and I'm glad it was Pat, so we can get this done, Counselor, but I want to commend Sergeant Delaney for the hard work that he's done with this Right to Remember, year in and year out, and he's raised hundreds of thousands of dollars, him and the fine men and women in the blue. Kudos out to him, and I really mean that, over and beyond the call of duty, and that park at Lynch is going to be a first-class endeavor, and he's done it the old-fashioned way, by hard work and dedication and tenacity to keep those officers' names alive. But let's give John Delaney a big, big Springfield welcome, and you know what, I miss John Delaney. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Allen.
Thanks, yeah, just same question as before, same kind of question. This money from Right to Remember is going to pay for that memorial, do we have an up, do we have a grant where we're working on Mary Lynch already?
Yep, we received funding from the Commonwealth of Mass and Community Development Black Grant Funds. It's about an $800,000 project in total, so their monies will go towards the memorial, and then landscaping, and part of the playground.
So the whole playground will be getting an upgrade?
That's correct, yeah, it's a full project.
Will the memorial be towards the school end?
It's kind of in the center of the new park, which will be kind of off the road, right off of North Branch Parkway.
Okay, great, thanks.
Are there any other questions or comments from the Council? Seeing none, all in favor of accepting the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm sorry, this is a financial order?
It's a grant.
Item number nine?
It's a grant, okay.
All in favor of accepting the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Back to our regular agenda. Mr. Clerk?
Item number six is a DPW Recycling Dividend Program grant in the amount of $71,500.
Good evening.
Good evening. Greg Supron, I'm the Deputy Director of the Department of Public Works, if you have any questions about the grant.
Can you just tell us about it?
Sure. It's a recycling dividends program put out by Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. Basically what it is, is when the city reaches certain thresholds in waste reduction, we qualify for points, and as those points accumulate, it results in a direct payment to the city from the state, and then we're allowed to use those funds towards further waste reduction programs. So it's money that the state gives us for reaching goals, and some goals might be single-stream recycling and waste diversion, educating our residents on the recycling programs, and once those goals are reached to satisfy that criteria, then, like I said, then the state issues those points, and those points are translated into money, and this year we have $71,500 in direct payments from the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection.
Counselor Allen.
Great, that's a good explanation. Are we doing well, or would you like us to do better, or how do you compare us?
We're the second highest in the state, so there's only, there's only one, only one community that got more money than us.
That recycles better than us?
Under this grant program, yes. So we're second, we're tied for second in the state, so there's a little room for improvement, but we're doing good, yeah.
That's good, great, thank you.
I believe we, second to Boston, I believe Cambridge and us, we're tied for second, so.
All right.
Any other questions from the Council? Seeing none, all in favor of accepting the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Thank you.
Item number seven is a Springfield City Library donation in the amount of $500.
All in favor of accepting the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Item number eight is in order to pay a bill of a prior year for the Law Department in the amount of $175.
Hello, Lindsay Hackett, Tamarack Drive in Springfield, and this is in order to request the Law Department to pay a bill of prior year from FY17. For $175.
Any questions from the Council? All in favor of suspension of Rule 19, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Roll call, Mr. Clerk?
On approving the order, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rook.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Twigs.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Shea.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Bud Williams.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos.
Yes. Well, this is efficient, the order is approved.
Item number 10 is a petition for, I'm sorry, is a petition for zone change, Department of Public Works 391 Hancock Street. This item is for first reading and referral to the planning board, so no action is required.
No action, okay.
Item number 11 is the Amazon Resolution sponsored by Counselor Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President. Many of you know that I put this on the agenda for last week, last week, it's, Amazon is looking for a second headquarters somewhere in North America, and they've put out an RFP, which Springfield on its own would not meet the requirements, but what many people don't know, or many people don't realize, is that Springfield as a region, as part of the New England Knowledge Corridor, absolutely does meet the requirements, and so I want to read this resolution into the record, Mr. President. Amazon is a publicly traded U.S. corporation, and is the leading internet retailer and technology company based in Seattle, Washington, and whereas the company is currently worth more than $500 billion, and presently maintains more than 380,000 employees at multiple facilities in North America and throughout the world, and whereas, as they continue to grow, Amazon recently announced a request for proposal from cities or regions to house Amazon HQ2, which will be Amazon's second headquarters in North America, and is expected to be an over $5 billion investment in construction, and provide as many as 50,000 high-paying jobs. And whereas in choosing the location for HQ2, Amazon has a preference for metropolitan areas with more than 1 million people, a stable and business-friendly environment, urban and/or suburban locations with the potential to attract and retain strong technical talent in proximity to major highways and international airport, and whereas New England's Knowledge Corridor is the nation's 20th-largest metro region with over 2.77 million people, comparable to Denver and St. Louis, but with twice their population density, which means ready access to labor and consumers, and whereas the Knowledge Corridor is one of the country's highest economic concentrations and largest capacities for research, with 41 colleges and universities, and 215,000 students, and whereas the region is consistently among the top 10 percentage in percentage of the population with advanced degrees, science, engineering, doctors, and new patents registered, and whereas the corridor is conveniently located in close proximity to major highways and Bradley International Airport, and whereas its great lifestyle includes diverse natural environments, cities and towns rich with culture, history, and world-class educational arts and entertainment opportunities, now therefore be it resolved that the Springfield City Council hereby fully supports the New England Knowledge Corridor's proposal to be home to Amazon HQ2, and encourages amazon.com to strongly consider the region as their new home. Mr. President, as I mentioned earlier, a lot of people don't realize that the city of Springfield, as part of the New England Regional Knowledge Corridor, meets the requirements that Amazon is looking for. We are in a great position to be able to attract one of the biggest companies in the world, and I'm hopeful that at some point, in talking to my colleague, Counsel Walsh, he also mentioned that it may be, and I'll let you speak to it as well, great if we can have Amazon visit the region, and so if you, if we want to include that into the resolution, I'll be happy to do that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other Counselors who would like to speak to the resolution? Counselor Williams.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Delany. I think it's great that we want to reach out for Amazon, but I think we have to be very, very careful with this one, because I know some other communities, Worcester has been proposed, and some other communities within the Commonwealth, but what we, first of all, I would hope that everybody, the mayor's on board, first of all. I think the mayor needs to be on board with the economic team, and folks in the region need to be on board, and I want to thank my colleague for thinking outside the box, but what we don't want to do is, Boston is in the running, and Boston has simply said that- And Boston has simply said that if we do get, we're fortunate to get Amazon, we will do hubs, Worcester have a hub, Springfield have a hub, and some other folks have hubs. We do not have the capacity to, my estimation, and based upon the experts I've talked to, we, this region doesn't have the capacity to take 50,000. The infrastructure isn't there, the technology really isn't there. This is not the, I call Boston the Silicon Valley of the east. We don't have that. Boston has all of that. And what we don't want to do is get into middle negotiations. I would prefer that Amazon knows they're all reading from the same sheet of paper, which is Boston. And when Boston does it, then they pan it out. And talking to the mayor, he just didn't think, the city, and I don't want to speak for him, didn't have the capacity. Because I've talked to the mayor about this, and certainly I would hope that the whole city is on board. This is something that the council does, and the mayor tomorrow morning says, oh, no, I don't think so. So I think it's a good start, but we need to make sure that the whole valley is in tune with this. Because there's some folks of the persuasion, if Boston gets it, we might be able to get a hub out here, which probably the more realistic situation. That's just, so I just, the air of caution, that once you float this out from the council, that all the EDC, Rick Sullivan, and all those folks are all on, on, on board and reading from the same sheet of paper. Because when Worcester did it, there was not a good reaction. The reaction throughout the Commonwealth was not good. And Worcester had the airport and all that stuff. So I'm just putting that out there. The council can do what they'd like to do, just make sure that we're all in this together.
Thank you, Counselor Williams. Counselor Ramos, and followed by Counselor Shea.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate my colleagues' concerns. Just to back, backtrack a little bit, this came about from a conversation with the EDC and, and the city's economic development team. I spoke to Kevin Kennedy, I spoke to Rick Sullivan, and they are in agreement, it is their expert opinion, that our region will benefit, or that the city of Springfield will benefit much more as part of a regional proposal with the New England Regional Knowledge Corridor.
Counselor Shea.
Yeah, I, I guess I want to act with the comments of President Ramos in the second time, but, and I take exception, and I understand where you're coming from, buddy, but I think when anything of this magnitude comes about, that Springfield and the Springfield area has an obligation to make a pitch for it. And if the other part of the state gets upset about it, I think that's too bad. The Knowledge Corridor, the Pioneer Valley, the communities back here, that was located back here, we could probably outperform anything in Boston. We don't have the congestion, we don't have the traffic problems, so I would not go down that road. I would make a full pitch by the, this city government to do whatever it has to do, and if someone else's feathers get ruffled, well, that's too bad. They don't have any problem ruffling our feathers, and we try to get rail service back here. So, you know, there's, this is a big company, they've already got a location, a processing center over in Connecticut in Simsbury, or one of those little towns over there. So I think it's a good fit, and it makes a good argument to try for.
Thank you, Counselor Shea. Are there any other counselors who wish to speak to this? Counselor Edwards?
I rise in support of this item, and I applaud my colleague for putting it forth. I'd like to just kind of real quickly just state to my colleagues that if you were to draw a 100-mile circle around Boston, about more than two-thirds of your circle, 100-mile circle around Boston, about two-thirds of your circle would be in the water. If you draw 100-mile circle around Springfield, you'll hit three capital cities, including Hartford, Boston, and Albany, New York, and one of the fastest-growing cities in the Northeast in Battleboro, Vermont. So the ideal that we could potentially look at is this as a regional project, I applaud his vision and view of it. And I can also remember, and I'm reminded, that a few years ago, when some gentlemen were gracious enough to invite me to lunch and explain to me their vision for a casino in the south end of Springfield, and I said, where? Because I couldn't visualize where you could put it because of all the buildings. And then when I, when words started to trickle out even before that, the first announcements were, of course, at Maristar, which we were easy to visualize that because it was pretty much a vacant property. And then the conversation shifted to the north end of Springfield, and some really large, high-profile names were thrown out there as the property owners who were willing to tear their buildings down and create a casino in the north end. But when they started talking about a casino in the south end, there was a lot of people who were naysayers and said it couldn't happen. Well, we do, we've got a billion-dollar project going there. So for us to sit here and think that it's wrong for us to put forth the ideal that we might be a region that could compete with Boston, with our lower utility costs, with our housing stock as low as it is, and let us be reminded that those colleges that are located in this corridor have no problem recruiting kids from around the world to come here to be educated. And then in fact, there's an article that was reported, that was written in the Springfield newspaper from 1908, that said that not only was the Springfield school system a model for the country, but it was a model for the world. So the fact that we could be in this running, to me suggests that we should have some vision and some thought, that the least thing that we should be concerned about is whether somebody in Boston would not think this is a good ideal. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Twigs?
I'd also like to indicate my support for this resolution, and I wish also to extend my congratulations to President Ramos for introducing it. I spoke to him earlier during the week and indicated that this is a measure that I can support.
Okay.
I'm reminded, and I would just share this, without repeating a lot that has been said, everything starts from a grain of sand. And if we don't take issues to begin something, and especially that which we believe in, then when are we going to take a position that is worthy of our support? So I would urge the council that we all support this unanimously.
Thank you, Counselor Twigs. Counselor Walsh?
Yes, I think it'd be great if we beat out Boston, I think that'd be really terrific. And I do think it's a nice idea if we could extend an invitation, because I think when people actually come here and see how much we have here in Springfield to offer, they might not now know, as I said when we discussed it, what a great area this is, all our schools and museums and everything that there is here, and our houses. But if we could ever get them to come, if that could be part of this, as you reach out to the other people in the development team, have them come here, I think they'd want to stay. So I think this is great, and I hope it's successful.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was wondering, Counselor Ramos, do you have any background information as to what this might look like compared to a municipality or a plan? I mean, how does that, a region, does that mean there's going to be separate sites throughout the region? Do you have any background information into that?
Thank you, Counselor Williams. Counselor Ramos?
In reading the RFP, they, they are looking to build one major facility. And so that, that major, that facility would be expanded, I believe through 2025, when it will be at full, at full capacity. And that, that's, that's one, one major reason, but, one major development, but that, that also comes with spinoffs. You know, Amazon is always going to have, you know, smaller distribution centers throughout the region. And as part of the proposal, it doesn't specifically state that, but if you look at their history, that's what they, that's what usually happens. But to answer your question, we, we, I'm not certain that, I think the only real municipalities that can, that can come forward with a proposal on their own would be, you know, someone like Boston, like Houston, you know, those major, major cities that meet the criteria. But on our own, we won't be able to meet that. But like I said, as part of the region, we absolutely do meet the criteria.
Counselor Allen?
Thanks, Mr. President. Yeah, Counselor Ramos, a little follow-up to Marcus, Counselor Marcus Williams' question. You refer to a Knowledge Corridor proposal. Is there already one, or are you the initiating person? Is there, the way I read it, it sounded like there's a Knowledge Corridor proposal, and you're suggesting we join in? Or is there one, or is there, or is-
There are talks, the, the New England Knowledge Corridor will, will be putting in an RFP.
And who's the-
And so, so the request is to be part of that, to support that, that RFP proposal.
And who's the driver of that? Is like Pioneer Valley Planning Council around here, like who's, who's doing it?
Locally, it is the EDC.
EDC is doing it?
Yeah.
So they're, they're going to submit the proposal, and this is our indication of support will go into their proposal?
Correct. They're, they're working with municipalities around the region to come forward with a, with a New England Knowledge Corridor proposal.
Is it a cross-state proposal? As Counselor Edwards said, you know, there's, like, there's Hartford, and the Knowledge Corridor goes to New Haven.
Yes.
Does it include-
Right.
Does the proposal from the Springfield Economic Development Council, does it include New Haven and Hartford, et cetera?
Well, it, it would be the Hartford and Springfield, the Knowledge Corridor runs from Hartford to Springfield and the surrounding area. If you take into account the population that, you know, from, from Springfield to New Haven, that's the population that, that is 2.7 million. But between Hartford and Springfield, it is about 1.5, I believe. And so that, even that in itself meets the, the $1 million population.
So the point of my question is, I, I, I understand the background in terms of the population, but are Hartford and New Haven in this thing with the EDC? Is it like a three-city thing already, or is it?
It's a, it's a, it would be a regional proposal. And so it would be all of the cities and municipalities, cities and towns that are within the New England, New England College Corridor, would be part of the proposal.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Counselor Williams?
I'm pro-Springfield, the biggest cheerleading Springfield we're going to have. The specific proposal says 50,000 to be housed. And then out of that, there's going to be hubs. So we're going to go with New Haven and Hartford, and, 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 and I guess Chicopee and West Springfield. All I'm saying, make sure that we pass this, I'll vote for it, that the mayor is on board, that all the other regions are on board. That's all I'm simply saying. It sounds great, but the reality of it all is that, is it, is it feasible? I would be one, let Boston run the show, let Boston hopefully wins the proposal, and then they'll deal with the rest of the state. They're in position to house 50,000. They have a site, Suffolk Downs. They already have a site. That's all I'm saying. It says to house 50,000. Now, this is going to house 5,000 in Hartford, and now you're telling Amazon exactly what to do. I, I, I agree with the regional approach, but I still think you got to be, if it's going to be centered in Springfield, that's one thing. If it's going to be centered in Hartford, that's another thing. If it's going to be centered in New Haven, that's another thing. If it's going to be, and I don't know how far this, this corridor goes, doesn't go to Worcester, I don't know how far up it goes, but if it's going to be housed in Springfield, that's one thing. If we're saying we're going along with something, and all the other, Hartford's going to have, it's going to be housed in Hartford, I'm not for that. So I think, I'll support it, so we have a unanimous vote. I still hold my reservations that I think Boston should be the, it's not, not knocking Springfield, it's being realistic. We cannot, we don't have a facility in Springfield to house 50,000 people, according to my conversation with the mayor. Now, if there's a regional approach, that's something entirely different. That's not Springfield, that's a region.
Thank you, Counselor Williams. Counselor Gomez?
I'll vote for it, I'm going to vote for it.
Mr. President, I understand everybody has, you know, questions, who, what, when, where, how, why, but realistically, you know, in a, in a regional aspect, my colleague, Melvin Edwards, Counsel Melvin Edwards, had stated that, you know, if you draw that scope around Springfield, and realistically, what we need to look at is, obviously, we know we don't have the capacity, because we have, we're having a problem with filling jobs and other projects around the city. But fact of the matter is, when you draw that corner, when you go north of this city, we're the biggest city. The ship stops with us, and then you have to take a right. No matter how you put it, you can take a left and go to Albany, Albany's just as big. But realistically, regionally, you know, and in the direction of this city, yeah, there's a renaissance of $3.3 billion coming to the city, but there's a renaissance in this region that's happening. You know, you have to understand that we have the, the 91 Viaduct Project, we're expanding that. There's questions about moving that highway across the river, probably, that project's going to take 40 years, some of us are probably not even going to be here when that happens. This region is on the up and up. And for us not to support something that is pro-Springfield, and realistically, probably, you're right, Counsel Williams, probably it might not be in Springfield, but it could be five miles from here. You know, I know a lot of people in my community would appreciate it, and all of your other wards would appreciate a, a nice-paying job. And we understand that there's a balance of, you know, when it comes to Amazon, and it takes away from our, our little guys. But realistically, if this city is turning into a 24/7 type of city, we're opening up a big casino, we're trying to get the East-West Railroad on board, this just makes sense with everything else that we have, we have in common, and that's pro-job, pro-work. And I think, and I just, in, in my eyes, that, you know, to bring this thing to Boston, you know, they, they have the capacity for it, they have the, the manpower, they have the numbers, but living-wise, you know, to live out in Boston and work there, there's a whole difference when we can offer, you know, something like, when we were talking about housing, people are willing to be able to go there, work there, and be able to afford to live around there. And it won't be too much of a commute. And I just, I just think it's a great idea. I, I understand everybody else's point, but for us not to put ourselves ahead of the game, we're cutting ourselves short. And, you know, just with the resolution, this just shows that Springfield is, is starting to take leadership when it comes to this region, ahead of Hartford, ahead of any other city that's close to us. You know, we can't just drop the ball on an opportunity. And if we're not selected, we're not selected, but we were first, and we're the city of first. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Counselor Edwards?
I'd just like to add one more thing really quick. Sometimes we just can't see the woods for the trees, because, you know, some of our biggest critics are our own family and neighbors, because we know where all our skeletons are. It's interesting when I talk to people who are traveling into Springfield from other big cities, and they talk about what a gem this area is. So sometimes we need to just get out of our own way. Let us be recognized that the railcar company that is now located in Springfield, their first foray into North America, and they are described as the world's largest railcar company, their future expansion in the narrow, this hemisphere, will all come from Springfield. And for those of you, I remember many years ago, learning about how we in Springfield, just a small city compared to Boston, but we're still a nuclear-strike city because of our proximity between Bradley, which is an international airport, because of Westover Air Force Base, because of Barnes Air Force Base, and because of our proximity to Fort Devens. I mean, Groton, Connecticut is not that far from Springfield. We are a regional, and, and we may not be able to see the woods for the trees, but internationally, we are. I believe just a couple of years, or a year or so ago, we had somebody come here who was looking for, to our support for taking over the Kittredge Building. And I believe my coll, one of my colleagues pressed this individual as to who his investors were. And the man said Dubai. And I remember there was some oohs in the room that day. Let me assure you, we have some businessmen right now that are operating out of the city of Springfield who have connections to Dubai. So the thing is, is like, once again, I'm going to say it, we need to get out of our own way sometime, and we may not be able to see the woods for the trees, but let me assure you that there's people around the world, we would not imagine, that do know where Springfield is. And they know our proximity to our relationship to the rest of the Commonwealth. Now, obviously, if we're competing against Boston and all things are fair and equal, then we probably don't win it. But if they're looking for a regional operation, and it's in Westfield, as my colleagues say, we're not getting jobs, we're not commuting from Springfield to an Amazon plant in the Boston area. And I don't know exactly, yeah, they may put it in Suffolk Downs, but what does that do for us, does that bring more money into the state coffers? But if we could build on what we have now with a casino, with the world's largest railcar company, with the birthplace of the Basketball Hall of Fame, with all the other attractions that we have here, if we could add this on to it, then it might make it easier for commuter rail to exist. And for you, can you imagine getting on a train and living in Springfield with our lower utility costs, our lower housing stock, and being able to commute to Boston and earn a Boston salary? So regardless of whether they are there, whether they're in Westfield, or they're in Suffolk, Connecticut, anywhere in this area, because once again, I will say it, and this area has no problems in recruiting kids from around the world to be educated. And all of us who have children, whatever is our biggest concern, is that when our children get old enough to leave home and go off to college, that they come back and put down roots in Springfield. And we're hearing it time and time again, that there's nothing happening here in Springfield. Well, it's never going to be if we can't get out of our own way.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Counselor Williams? Counselor Williams.
I don't want to go back, thank you, Mr. President. I don't want to go back and forth, but everyone's going off on a tangent. I'm reminded when we supported MGM with all these jobs, right now, uh, I'm concerned about Springfield first, and folks living in Springfield receiving jobs. MGM's having a very hard time finding the workforce from Springfield people. They can't meet their threshold. They can't meet their threshold. They're having a very difficult time. Read your emails, talk to MGM. They actually went outside of the city to recruit people. This is something that should be on all our radar screens. So, all these granios plans and all this is great. All I'm simply saying is that if we're going to bring this thing to Springfield, it should be folks for Springfield. I'm tired of doing this regional thing where Springfield sees very, Springfield residents see very little benefit of the jobs. That is a, a reality. If you think that the workforce development, uh, we can't do it for the casino, MGM, and we're trying to, it's legislation to correct some things, and trying to have MGM start some starter courses, basically, to get our citizens ready so they can meet their obligation of the host agreement. As it is now, Springfield people will not be thirty-five percent of the workforce, they'll be outside the city. So, if we're going to make it for Springfield, fine. We're going to make it for Hartford and New Haven, I'm not for it. All I'm simply saying is that it would be great if they could come to Springfield. If we had the infrastructure, the workforce, all of that's needed, I would say, okay. But I'm going to vote for it, but I'm just putting the other side of, of the coin. I appreciate everybody's comments, they've all been very, uh, good and fair.
Thank you, Counselor Williams. Is there a motion on the floor, Counselor Twigs? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Um, this is a voice vote. All those in favor of the resolution say aye?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Uh, our next, is there any further business before the council? There's no further business before the council. Our next meeting will be October sixteenth. This meeting is adjourned.